Do you think first real quick before starting?
All right, just a reminder for the board, when you want to speak, make sure you push your speaker and then turn it off when you're not using it. For any visitors here, the exit doors are right there. If there's a fire or tornado or anything, there's an exit there, the A.D.'s over there. What else? Did I forget anything else? Shelter in places in the bathroom over there, so. In case of the active shooter, we will run to that room three or four over there. Okay, let's go ahead. Are you ready?
I call the June 3, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting of Glencoe Park District to order. Lisa, please call the roll and note the time.
It is 7:01. Commissioner Hazen.
Here.
Commissioner Colby.
Here.
Commissioner Weifman.
Here.
President Spain.
Here.
And Commissioner Avita Guzman is absent as of right now.
Okay, all right, great. Is everyone here to celebrate Ms. Rose?
Yes, they are here to celebrate Ms. Rose.
Okay, so well, if anyone's here for any other reason, let us know. Um. Lisa, um. Wait, are it says in the.
You want to read it or would you like me to?
What would you like?
Okay.
So I'm excited to read this resolution because.
We're fighting over it over here.
Both of my kids have had the privilege of, of working with Ms. Rose or being students of Ms. Rose. So tonight, we're reading a resolution honoring the retirement of Rose Pepe.
Is it Pepe?
Okay, thank you. You're, you're just always going to be Ms. Rose.
We should have put that.
Whereas Rose Pepe was employed by the Glencoe Park District on the Staff of the Children's Circle program, beginning on March 21, 2007. And whereas due to her skill set, professionalism, and mentoring abilities, she has served, she served as a vital role model to our Children's Circle staff. And whereas Rose has been a vital part of the Children's Circle team distinguishing herself as a creative and energetic leader or teacher, who brought new ideas and enriching activities to the program. And whereas she contributed significantly to the development and care of the children in her charge, working closely with Children's Circle families to build lasting relationships and create a strong foundation for lifelong learning. And whereas Rose demonstrated service above and beyond the call of duty during the COVID-19 pandemic, providing essential childcare to district families and allowing parents to continue working during a time of uncertainty. And whereas she shows outstanding spirit, it's all caps, fully embodying the district's core values of being safety-driven, passionate, integrity-focused, responsive, innovative, and team-oriented. And whereas Rose played an instrumental role in the 2018 to 2019 Playground Design Committee, helping to shape a space that reflects the needs and imagination of young learners. And the initial planning of the district sensory room, helping to identify this capital project through collaborative discussions that centered inclusive learning and the needs of all children. And whereas Rose has faithfully served the Glencoe Park District and its community for 18 years, leaving a lasting legacy through her leadership, dedication, and care. And now therefore be resolved, the Glencoe Park District Board of Commissioners representing all the residents of the park district, recognize the meritorious service of Rose Pepe and record it in the permanent records of the Glencoe Park District for all to see. This resolution shall be in full force and in effect immediately upon its passage. So, you know, this is, this is kind of funny when I picked up Margot today from Children's Circle. She's like, everybody, my mom has a meeting tonight to celebrate Ms. Rose. About it or if she just remembered that I mentioned it, but she was just so excited about it. And I was, and I said, Margot, is there something that, you know, I can tell, talk about for Ms. Rose tonight? And she's like, she hugs me every day. And, and so we talked about you at dinner, sorry. And we were remembering, Edith, how you were Maddie's basically favorite teacher. And every time she comes back to the building, you are the person that she looks for. She's like, well, Ms. Rose, and she's so excited to hug you. And I can tell that the girls really appreciate, I mean, as a parent, well, they're ready for kindergarten. This is amazing. But what they had to share with me was just about the love that you showed them and the way that you made them feel. And, and I think it's a testament that years later, Maddie's just still just so delighted to see you. But the other, other things that she told me that one of her favorite memories, and this is coming up soon, is that just the learning, the dance for graduation, I know you do it every year. But that was like the favorite thing in the classroom. So I'm really looking forward to seeing it. It'll be a fun event this year. And yeah, just saying, I mean, I feel like the Children's Circle kids, when they start at South School, they are so well-prepared. And really just a testament to not what they've done, they've done a lot throughout the Children's Circle rooms. And I know particularly that last year, not just the academic learning, but the social emotional development and getting them ready to be in the classroom. It's, it's phenomenal. And I just felt so happy as a parent. I didn't, I didn't worry about it at all. And so a lot of that is thanks to you. So thank you so much.
So Carol always steals what I'm gonna say. It's like, we think alike.
Sorry, that's why.
That's why you went first, I know. 18 years, that's a long time to leave such impression on this community. Think about 18 years, we have 18-year-olds coming back and go, huh, head, Ms. Rose, you know? So what a legacy you have left for this community that will always be here. You always have a smiling face. You always warmly greet parents and children alike. And that's a special quality. Not everybody has that, and especially after 18 years. You still have that same quality. You still act like it's your first year of, of teaching here. And I so appreciate that. It did not go unnoticed. I, I love that quality about you and everything you gave back to the community. So thank you so much. We know, when I talked to the superintendent Wang, she's like, you prepare those kids so well for kindergarten. I'm like, well, it's not me. It's Ms. Rose and all the other teachers. And that's a testament too. That's a, that's a, that school has high standards and we prepare our children so well. We really appreciate that. You will be missed and your, your legacy will live on. So, thank you. But I know Bobby.
I would also like to say a few words, obviously following President Spain and Lisa. I have also had the privilege of having both my boys being in your presence and they loved every minute of it. I think it's telling that your colleagues turned up tonight in such support of the impact you've made on them, let alone the hundreds of children in Glencoe and the surrounding communities who you impacted. Rose, we really appreciate everything you've done. We have been so lucky to have you for the last 18 years in the community and at the district. And every parent I talked to about Children's Circle would say to me, we just want to make sure we have Ms. Rose. And I think even Jess is nodding, as long as we have Ms. Rose, everything will be okay. So I think that's a good way to summarize your, your career here. And we thank you so much and we wish you all the best and we hope you come and visit.
And I know you're not the person that wants recognition, but we felt really strongly, we wanted to make sure you came to the night's meeting. And maybe say a few words at graduation also, if you let us. But thank you. And would you like to say a few words? Sure, come on up. Oh, Mike, Michael, I don't know. Okay, Michael can.
But thank. I echo everything they said. And I think, I literally think my kid's science enthusiasm is because of you. He came home, I remember he was in class, I think with some of your kids, and he would talk about how you would talk about the planets. And I did have before, before Levi, I had my daughter in a different preschool. And what you taught him set him up. And I don't expect him to understand the gravitational pull of one planet versus the other. But what you taught him was to be curious and you taught him to ask questions and that served them so well. So just thank you for that.
Okay, now you can come up.
Now you can go.
John, can you turn on the microphone? Or thank you, Michael.
Good evening. As I stand here reflecting on my journey from being a pre-K teacher, I cannot help but feel immense gratitude to the Glencoe Park District. It has been an honor to be part of an institution for 18 years and to have worked with young children and being a part of their early learning experience. Working with my colleagues and students has been incredibly rewarding. And I will cherish the memories and friendships I have made over the years. I appreciate the support I have received from my coworkers and I am proud to have been part of such a dedicated team. I'm confident that the Glencoe Park District will continue to make a significant difference in the lives of children and families for years to come. Thank you again for the privilege of being part of the Glencoe Park District. Thank you so much. Appreciate everything. And again, just to add to that, I just want to say something. So when I first started, I always thought, how can I make these kids happy? Like, what do I have to do? So I envisioned myself being their age and what would make me happy. And this is how I started Children's Circle. Just wanted them to be curious, to be happy, to learn a lot. And so I hope the legacy continues here. Thank you. Appreciate it.
See you. Oh, okay. To Jess. I love it. This is how I get you to take a picture. Can't say no, Rose. And then. Thank you. This will be officially approved and passed at the June board meeting and into the Glencoe Park District records forever. So thank you. You can stay or you can run for the hills if you want. Yes, so. I, I, we will not, we will not take offense. We will not take offense at all. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move forward with a presentation and discussion of the full-time compensation study. And I believe Director Contrero will be leading this study. And do we have a guest?
Yes, we do. It's up on the screen.
Okay, excellent.
No, that was a, that was a little typo. So it's just, the certificate will just be passed next. Thank you. Uh, Rachel? There you go. Hold on one second. Let's get the door closed and maybe turn up the volume a little bit. Look, it's warm setup. So that Rachel's come in from someplace warm, I think. Where? I don't think she's in the house. Is it? Okay, perfect. Yeah.
So for variable agencies, we've initially developed a party that we had a data from. And this client is unpacked while we can provide it. For this particular study, two surveys were combined, focused on specific positions that the Canadian agency. So we developed one survey that's centered particularly across recreation agency. This is the major two positions along with the highest survey. The village agency is the position. You have a person that's need at agencies that are surveying in a park recreation. Individuals involved, individuals that they respond with the client's data. And then over here, village survey. So again, you broke the bound, you do your own surveying. All the villages that we surveyed, they respond to the survey that has impact. And we'll put this down here. It's really important as well. The village survey, the position that we're going to be doing on the goal of general physical high vision. They even highly miracle to park district roles. So that's been one really relevant position. Active report. So I'm ready to be next to them. So that's how we do just in 13, that's the one. Positions that were too specialized or not comparable were excluded. Earlier, agencies involved, seeing environments that responded to the survey request. And then over here, we see multiple patch rates. So these agencies committed helping in data with wages below the permanent wage. Part of the process, seeing the data we use, data is growing. So in line ratio, the administration would use the data removed and made that they're outdated or they did not. It's too insurance for being relevant. Fish, excluded, the amount of. Now we're going to do our survey itself. So we did one, we're going to do using a survey. Each position within time, distance, and gathering activity data. So we looked at the job title. Mission summary. You can see we got so many. This hour in the angle was used to determine the information gap for the appropriate new positions. So again, bunch of agents mentioned that data is growing when we really think there was a plan to come and review. If everything will be the data that is calculated and measured, they're really good. Southern Rangers, part of the present, forgotten data. He asked for minimum and maximum. Who are actually looking at the data, leaving purchase, review the minimum and the max. Not because they provide a more complete interview and competition. An actual pattern of salary, well, my ranges can do this leading because they don't capture the after potential in competition. Um, generally, they go by, however, if there's some missions where there's non-range or there's. See the actual range, that thing. And then that rating like, like. Plan data between winter, spring, fall, and February range. So then for those compensation data, we need to calculate using the median and then being a percent title. We will notice that the plan was just for 50% power of the median. And then so when we look back, we can notice from the survey of agency that showed in table one and table two is how we can relate the branch and base off of that. So there's a good percentile within the middle point of factory data. So faculty employers are those agencies that we survey, and less than that and more. Used as a standard for really funding that. 60 to 65% of our clients use the 50% title. While the registered higher than 60, 50, 70. So we're looking at just how she's made. But depending on over 50, probably. So 60 can be slightly more than middle of your range before we kind of live. Paying over for that. In terms of NBT, I think they actually will have implemented 80% title. Like because majority, most of your effective 80% title. It's very dependent to begin a live. Among park districts, specifically, three clients do 50% of the computer. And then organizations often gain to organic salaries of 50% title to be kind of there that it helps the community. Looking at the proposed compensation plan. It is about 11 pay rate. Going from A to K, the baby in the moment, K being the highest. From A to H have 45% range spread from minimum to maximum. And from K to K have 50%. 50% of spread, K to K, which means you're minimum to maximum. What I mean is at A through to H, it's from the minimum to maximum, which is 40%. And then grade five to K, 50%. The range of all, ranks way over, there's a progression in the age range from K to 60. And it is common from a senior position, those that have all to that target, five to K. Um, larger percentage, so it's not a great difference of stability, expertise, as well as career development. This is table two with the number of work. Some nice kind of problem. The way to accumulate, I'm sure, and pull this up as well, and kind of save it on the screen, we'll make it a step further. So when we're writing down compensation plan for the K, they will. So in terms of this implementation, ways to spend compensation is below the minimum compensation range. Being that current salary falls below the minimum to that range. Regardless, their range to the minimum of the range. The compensation employees who apply their compensation is within that range should be aligned into the. To the changes. Then the compensation employees who submit compensation to the public should be held there. If they were named without a production patient until the market indicates that they're applying. The only part of things could be. We'll know that the specific getting sense and not the goal to this study. And we're concerned, so this variable point, not applying for time of study. So if we're hoping to prepare, there are terms of individuals flying above and in the proposed range. For return administration in terms of the administrative compensation and keeping up with the barely requirement of possible ability adjustment. So considering annual colas, we saw right mind moving off position. When in the mind, period reasons for retention, architected stability. We also recommend continuing to use those technical agencies. Continue to survey those groups, creating those separate surveys to set market judgment. And like you know, we recommend in Q4, we have children's and more through all, just on board with the whole man here's budget. Then in terms of any adjustments, any increases based on the findings from those periods we each knew. So we're in a requirement adjusting each paper eventually based on that. If for our client, like, for the pool up at table, welcome now sharing. You all see this table one. And I love the question.
Rachel, I have a question. So you said that only the ones that were bolded. 11 responded. Do you think that's a, like, what do you think about that response rate? Do you think that's a good response rate? How does that compare to other surveys you do?
Yeah.
A lot of this data is, is public. Why do you, why do you bother with the survey? Sorry. A lot of, almost all of the data is, is public data. You know, what, what the villages and what the park districts pay their employees is, is public. The only thing that's not easy to find is sometimes their title or responsibilities. Why do we bother with the surveys and not just use the public data?
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? So for the current, the proposed salary range for the minimum and maximum, are those actual minimum and maximum salaries for the survey? Or did everyone actually provide you a band for the roles? Like. So, so for all of these, these positions, and there's a salary band, right, a minimum and a maximum? Was that based off of each community or park district providing their ranges? Are, are the minimum and maximum based off of people, are those actual minimum and maximum salaries? Or did everyone provide to you bands for each role? And was that data they had available?
Yeah.
Yes, because I was thinking maybe, like, I was trying to understand if the ranges were based on what they set up for their ranges versus what they're actually paying their people.
Yeah.
So these are, so can you summarize? Because I'm confused now. But let's talk about, let's just pick out a line for the superintendent of marketing and communications. Is there actually someone that has a minimum of 79, 174? And there's actually someone that has a 118, 761? Or? Or is that just at any given park district? The ranges that are possible for that park district's guideline? Yeah. Right. Is there someone that you surveyed that actually makes seventy-nine thousand, one, seven, four? In the role of letter H, superintendent of marketing and communications?
Yeah.
No, no, like, yeah, don't, I don't want to know who it is, but
Yeah.
The, the point is, these are not range, it sounds like these are not ranges. These are actual from their survey results. Someone is earning that amount.
Well, I had the opposite impression.
Yeah. So, so if you, really the fiftieth percentile salary survey data column will kind of indicate how the ranges were developed. What, what the underlying data used to develop those ranges? And then the, the ranges that were developed are, are based off of the proposed salary range. Um, so no, to answer your question, there's not somebody out there that's making in the superintendent of marketing's example. There's not somebody that was at one hundred and thirty-six thousand and somebody that's at ninety-four thousand. And that's how we came up with the range.
No, is there someone at seventy-nine, one, seven, is it current salary?
So that's our current sal, that was our
That's Glencoe.
Yeah, that was our existing, correct. Yes, that's our existing range from our previous compensation study, which took place in June of twenty twenty-one.
Like this was the slide you were showing that other park districts supplied their ranges.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this was all driven, as Rachel had alluded to, all driven off of ranges. That's the, that's the data we want more than the actual salary. And that Commissioner Kovey, I think speaks more to, you know, why you don't necessarily want to just go with what they have on the website? Because usually they're not posting ranges and it's just easier for us to kind of get that information directly from the HR departments.
That fiftieth percentile you could get from website data.
That's based off, yeah, if we compile, that's based off of all actuals, correct?
The fiftieth percentile is based off actuals. Current salary range is Glencoe's current salary range. Proposed salary range is what y'all are thinking about for the future.
Correct.
A quick question about the proposed salary range. So from a data perspective and a data aggregation, it, I want to make sure I understand it. It's based off of the market information that was collected?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And then are you factoring in the colas and like inflation or some of the, the economic activity that's happening right now in the market?
So, and Rachel can, can correct me if she or can add to it. But this is basically a snapshot of where we stand right now. And as part of the compensation plan implementation, the plan will be to account for, um, you know, C P I, um, cola, those types of factors and on an annual basis and to adjust the ranges in line with what those changes are.
So in a scenario where we have current employees, is then the proposal? Let's bring them up to somewhere between the min and max.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we're in the need of hiring individuals, then we're going to work off of the proposed salary.
Correct. That's exact, exactly right. Yep.
Based on their years of experience, we would slot them into that salary range.
Yes. And as Rachel said, the, the proposed salary range is at the fiftieth percentile. So fifty percent pay more, fifty percent pay less.
Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm much more understanding now. Thank you for walking me through that.
And so if I understand, and maybe John, this is a question for you. If we go with this proposed salary range as recommended. Essentially, the immediate change would to be bring, bring up anyone below the minimum to the minimum. And then salary adjustments would occur within the range based on basically a manager's discretion of merit and experience.
Yeah, that, that is correct. There are currently five employees that, um, are below the minimum range. Uh, we did budget for, um, uh, that those types of market adjustments for fiscal twenty-six. Um, what we've budgeted appears to be well within, uh, the, the means to be able to at least make those initial adjustments. Um, M G T has also mentioned that there are, some of their, um, clients will take a two-year implementation approach. It, it kind of depends. Um, you know, I'm confident we'll be able to get everybody up to at least the, um, proposed salary range. Um, this fiscal year and, and within the parameters of what we had budgeted.
Last time we've done this?
Uh, the last one was adopted in June of twenty twenty-one, so four years ago.
It's also right post kind of COVID-ish.
Yeah.
Actually during
It was, it was outdated right away.
Yeah.
It was.
Yes.
But we, to be fair, just for your information, we, we did sort of a mini one for, for the teachers. Did we do one for the children's circle? We did a, we did a salary adjustment, but not
We didn't, we didn't do the
We
We did adjustments.
The adjustments, the market-based adjustments for the teachers.
And you said it was already in the budget?
Uh, the market adjustments have been budgeted for, correct?
There was an allowance, so we don't, if we do this, what are the next steps? Are we gonna adopt the new salary ranges? Is there, like, what would
Yeah.
Back then, the next, if, if you were prepared, ready, we could adopt the salary ranges at the next four meetings.
Okay. And then the actual adjustments, is that the management?
That's a management decision that we would do internally.
And merely Lisa and myself.
Aren't they?
Anybody need further information?
I mean, somebody's, somebody's come down that, and I want to understand, like, the facility coordinator, the customer service rep. Right now, our range is, oh no, some of those don't come down, those, they come down. Our max is still lower than the fifty percent max, right? So help me make sure I understand this. And you're looking at, at the letter C, Charlie. The last one, the fiftieth percentile min is at fifty-seven. Isn't that fifty percentile max is at eighty-one? And we're having our max be like ten percent lower than that. I'm kind of curious as to know what our thoughts are with, with that.
So the, the, the positions are slotted into the individual grades based on, um, you know, job responsibilities and, and what, you know? We, we try to, try to group these positions, um, that are as similar as possible into a specific grade.
Yeah.
So, so that is one that had a, a bit of a higher fiftieth percentile data. But, you know, we felt were, um, still comparable to the other positions listed in grade C.
Does that fall into one of the categories that Rachel spoke about where even if we're above the fiftieth percentile, you recommend just keeping it at that level? That, until the market catches up?
Um, so that's one where we would potentially be behind, um, given the max is eighty-one thousand and the, um, the, the max fiftieth percentile data, data is eighty-one thousand and the maximum proposed salary range is seventy-two. I will say that this position in particular has already, um, had a promotion and they are in a different grade now. And, um, we're, we're compensated and, and adjusted and now well beyond, um, you know, the minimum on the new proposed grade. So you picked a good one.
That's the math.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Rachel. Um, first, I would like to thank John and, and Grant, um, human resource manager here. They worked really hard with Rachel. Thank you, Rachel. Um, making sure the data was as clean as possible. So we appreciate all that.
Yeah, accuracy of the data was very important to us. And again, that, thank you to Grant. He did a lot of hard work on this and then
It's only as good as the data, you know? And so they were really, you know, a couple of those came in, were like low minimum wage. We, they obviously didn't do a, a salary survey since before twenty twenty. So, um, it was very important that they really took time and look at the data and this was a long-term project. So kudos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So all I need is, is there a consensus to move this forward to the, um, June board meeting for approval?
Yeah, I think so.
Not heads work. Okay, cool.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
And sorry, what, what exactly is the financial impact of those five employees? Just so we're aware.
Less than ten thousand dollars. We budgeted forty.
Okay, less than ten thousand. And then we don't expect any impact? Except for when hiring new people?
So after we bring those employees up to the, to the minimum, uh, you know, Lisa and I will kind of evaluate what, what that compression might have done to some of the other positions. Um, but again, we're, we're confident that we'll be able to make the market adjustments within what we budgeted. Um, and then to, to your point, if we are hiring somebody with, with little experience but qualified for the role, they would start out at the, at the minimum range, but certainly we evaluate years of experience, um, whatever other credentials that they may have, um, when, when hiring. So it's not uncommon for us to hire maybe between the minimum and, and midpoint, um, when hiring a position.
There's some positions that we just automatically look for years of experience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and it was good to, this is a good study to do, I think. Um, we want to keep up with the market and I, I don't think the proposed salary ranges are all that shocking either.
No, they're not. Yeah, yeah. It was a huge increase. It wasn't, you know, so.
Okay. All right. So moving forward, it looks like we're progressing with our capital project plan.
We are.
Uh, next we have a review of the Shelton Park project bid.
Excellent. Kyle, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, President Spain. Thank you, Lisa. Uh, so back at the November committee meeting, we discussed, uh, initially our capital projects for this fiscal year. Uh, one of those projects included was the Shelton Court racket, a Shelton racket court project. Uh, after multiple rounds of community input over multiple years, the board ultimately settled on a, uh, single tennis court, two pickleball configuration. Uh, we also budgeted out of our operations for pathway and drainage improvements at Shelton Park. We combined both of those projects into a single bid to capture savings, understanding that the contractor doing, um, both jobs would have the same types of some subcontractors and asphalt being the main. Um, we had our bid opening on May twenty-eighth. Had a very favorable bid turnout, a very favorable, uh, bid results. Uh, we received a total of eight contractors submitting bids, uh, for that work. Uh, the bid prices ranged from two hundred and forty-nine thousand from Chicagoland paving all the way up to four hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Uh, the budget for this work was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so well under budget. Um, and just for the new board members to understand, when we get, um, contractors placing our, uh, bids on our projects. We typically will accept the lowest responsible bidder. Um, bidder rejections will typically only take place if there's poor reference checks, previous work with the contractor that had poor results. Uh, a lack of, a lack of bonding or insurance, um, uh, compliance. Uh, so with that, um, happy to answer any questions related to the bid packages received for Shelton Park.
Just out of curiosity, how does this bid compare to similar projects we've done?
So, uh, great question. Uh, so this is much better pricing than, uh, the tennis courts we did last year. Um, if, um, exist, board members that were on last year recall, we actually only got one bid on our tennis court package initially last year. And it was well over budget. We ended up having to go out for a rebid and we're able to get a few additional bidders to come in and bring that cost down. Um, this is a much better, uh, bid result, bid climate, um, but it's probably a product of timing and, um, contractors looking for work. So, um, working in our benefit.
Why? Do you think that's like mortgage or like interest rates, the economy, like what? I'm just curious because I, I like, I want to hear what's going on in the
It's, I'll, I'll let you answer, but we're seeing the same, very similar things in our lineup.
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah, I think there's some uncertainty for contractors and they want to line up work, uh, get things on the books. That's making some, uh, some assumptions.
Okay.
Um, I think there's a lot of factors, you know, with just timing of a specific bid in our pool of contractors, where their workload is. If these eight contractors already had their work lined up through November, we may have only gotten one, two or three bids. So, um, you know, we always want to budget for what we've seen in the past and when we can take advantage of these sorts of, uh, competitive bids, we absolutely want to do that.
Because I know we're concerned about the price of materials coming up for some of our, um, projects, right? Like steel tariffs, maybe a factor, right? So do you think that for some of the other projects that we're doing, we might continue to see a trend of more competitive bidding?
Um, I sure hope so. I know our discussions with our construction management team with White and Company. And we'll have the, um, guaranteed maximum price contract for discussion at the next board meeting, or excuse me, at the July committee meeting. As it stands right now, the draft, um, budgets that we keep seeing are not having any massive escalation from the originals. Um, and we can get more into that July meeting, but we have a big cushion for tariffs and escalation built into those. But the actual, uh, markets that they're seeing haven't increased the way that, uh, we may have expected or thought that they might. So, um, hopefully things remain that, uh, that case through July when we can get under contract and have that guaranteed price locked in. Uh, short of any, any, uh, changeovers, if that's referring to the maintenance facility specifically being the, the larger ticket, so.
Do you think there's a leveling off of demand for pickleball courts?
Um, you know, I don't, Lisa, I don't know if you got your pulse on the, uh, larger park street community. I know that, um, it's still a very popular item and I know it comes up. Um, I, I think we saw the demand for it here in Glencoe when we went through the community input process and, uh, ultimately drove us to the, the configuration.
Oh, no, I agree with that. It's the demand for development of
Oh, development. You know, asphalt contractor is going to treat a pickleball court the same way they'll treat a tennis court or a pathway. To them, it's an asphalt project. The, the color coating or paint that goes on the top is really negligible in terms of any sort of costs. So, um, I don't know that any drop in demand on pickleball as a whole is driving it. It's, it's possible, but, um, I don't, I'm not sure.
I think this, from talking to other park districts, the bids are coming in very favorable. So I think people, um, maybe in the private sector are holding back on projects based on the, the climate. So we're, we're moving ahead. So, um, there's always more desire than to get into public work to know that they, they'll have work and that we pay. Um, so those are a couple of things. So I think that's just the right climate for wanting to schedule work into, into the winter. So.
And from scheduling standpoint, we're looking to start this in late summer and completion by November first, similar to how, um, Watson Central were done last year. So late summer wrapped up towards the tail end of the, the season.
Yeah, but that's why we are pushing for the maintenance. So we think the sooner we get it on people's books, the better it will be for us.
Um, oh, go ahead. Just a quick question. When I looked through the bid, um, and these guys, I don't think they do, um, the shrubbery, but we're I think that there was discussion in one of the prior meetings, just as far as noise abatement, talking about adding shrub. Is that not part of this? Is that a separate thing?
So what we landed on was doing the acoustoblock fence panels, um, on the, uh, existing fence or the, the existing fence on the north side. And then the fence that'll divide the pickleball courts, which are to the west and the tennis court to the east.
Yeah.
Uh, we have money budgeted for landscape improvements. If we see quickly that the acoustoblock fences are not enough, we can absolutely add, um, hedgerows on that north, uh, north side. Um, that's something we have, uh, money budgeted for.
Okay.
I just, just a general question or just out of curiosity, in situations like this where we're seeing bids coming in more favorable, favorable to us. Do we often maybe do more like bulk pricing or ask for more discount, um, if we give them more business?
Uh, we, we absolutely could do that if we had other projects budgeted for or lined up for this year. We didn't have any other asphalt for this particular contractor, aside from the maintenance facility, which the asphalt work will likely fall into next spring. We didn't have any large-scale asphalt projects, um, slated for this year.
But you're questioning
An advantage of the pricing terms? Yeah. We would, we would have to, if we had multiple project, projects, we would have to bid them out at that time to get that price. And they would probably bid more favorably, but we could not add projects onto this bid.
Okay.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah, like, yeah, like if there's three bids, you know, you have three projects, does it become like a master agreement?
We would have to bid them all together.
Yeah, we did that for the tennis courts last year. We did that. We had two tennis courts that were slated. So we bid them as a package and realized some savings that way as well. So.
Very good questions. Very, very good questions.
So we'll be voting on that.
Yep, just needed consensus to move that to approval for the next meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Um, so review of the Milton Park bid is next.
All right. Uh, same general timeline of initial discussions with the board on Milton Park. Uh, ultimately, after all the community input and board discussion. All right. Same general timeline of initial discussions with the board on Milton Park. Ultimately, after all the community input and board discussion, landed on replacing the playground with a playground in a similar footprint. The community was spoke fairly clearly that they liked the Woodlands playground design. So that's what we moved forward with. No expansion of the swing sets and engineered wood fibers or playground mulch as the surface. So we had our bid opening on May 28th for the labor installation portion of the work. We received three bids for that portion of the work. Hacienda landscaping being the lowest responsible bidder at 127,848. We have worked with Hacienda in the past, references all checked out. So we would recommend the board move forward, accepting their bid package. In addition to the installation and labor portions, we are recommending that we purchase the playground equipment directly to avoid contractor markup and expedite the timeframe with which we can receive the physical playground structure. For this particular manufacturer, they are not part of a cooperative purchasing alliance. So our legal counsel recommended the board waive the competitive bid process in order to allow us to purchase this playground structure. There are no other manufacturers that make this playground structure. It's a only, can get them from Create Play. So there's really no sense in doing the competitive bid as we would only receive a bid that we would accept from Create Play. Typically, we wouldn't request waiving competitive bidding on labor or anything like that, but for a product like this that you can only get from the one manufacturer that's been showcased to the public, that's what the legal counsel recommended. So the table breakdown below, we have our labor costs. Again, Hacienda bid of 127, 127,848. The Create Play equipment itself at 80,860. The additional equipment being the swings, spinner and bench replacements estimated at $30,000 for a total estimated construction cost of 238,708. Construction budget on this project was 283,500. So again, favorable big climates. Things can under, underbid or under budget and would recommend moving forward with Hacienda's bid package and the Create Play purchase.
So there's only really one question that we have to ask ourselves is, do we spend the money on a goat?
I did ask that.
I know. I saw it and I saw the pricing here.
Yeah.
I was like.
It's funny. I was like, oh, well, this will be
That's the first thing I asked him.
Like, well, it doesn't have to be for the park, right? Because the extra state.
No, it has to be for the park.
So just to clarify, the alternate pricing for the goat, that 4,200, that's the install? That's
Right, but you're still
It was still well under budget.
I know. Our, our finance team at work would tell me, you know, you should, you should look at that as an additional cost, but I'm, I'm going to look at this as, as the thing. I'm, I'm actually serious. Like, do we have money for the goat?
The goat with
Goat's going to live there forever?
No, no, it's, it's an homage to a goat. It's like a, it's like a goat statue.
The climbing thing.
No, we're not going to, we are not going to be the host of a pet, of the animal farm.
No, not. You know, it's funny, Michael, because I was actually going the other way. I was like, normally when you set a budget, you're like, well, I could spend up to this amount, right?
I know.
I was like, well, what is the, I guess we appropriated it. Did we appropriate it specifically for this project or was it a line item in an overall capital project? Like, does the savings, can we spend it somewhere?
You can spend it somewhere else.
That goes into other projects. So if we come under budget on things, we then take that money and put it into other projects.
It's, it's definitely, if we spend money on the goat here.
Exactly.
Yeah, if we spend money on the goat here, we will be not be spending money someplace else. Like that's
We could, we could. That's where if we go under budget, anything we put it in. Or we also have that, if we go over, then we have money for that too. So. I bet that's, you're totally your call if you want. It's how much is for the goat installation?
What was the goat? So it was 4,200 for insulation from Hacienda. I want to say it was like 14 or 16 for the actual.
Oh, okay. So that's a lot. Okay.
For, for a fifth goat?
Yeah. So I, I redact my question.
Custom made. That's why. They don't have goats sitting around.
Yeah, I think the thought crossed my mind too. And just because you budgeted, does that just
That sounds all right. Yeah. Okay.
So no goat.
So no goat. So this will come to the board at the next board meeting under two action items. One, to accept the bid package and one to waive the, the competitive bid process for the actual playground. But that does save us money if we can buy the playground, right? If they had to buy it, they'd mark it up. So we wanted, plus we can order it right away and store it if we have to, trying to get in again before the steel prices go up.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're
Okay, good.
Okay. This is like great news.
Yeah.
This is really, we were really excited.
I'm excited because, and also, I mean, because I'm going to the saving money. I mean, we just don't know what's going to happen.
We don't know what's going to happen. Right, exactly. So.
Okay, but that's not what I expected to hear. So.
Just out of curiosity, the differential, is that mainly because of labor costs? Again, going back to the first project of you're seeing.
Yeah.
The, repeat that one more time. I'm sorry.
I was sorry, just thinking about what you were just saying. Is the difference between what was budgeted and what is coming in, is that predominantly because of lower labor cost?
No.
I, I think it's just the contractors hungry for work and trying to lock things up. There's probably a combination of factors. You know, each project's a little bit different, but on the whole, I think similar work last year, it's less this year. It's probably just due to the, the demand of the contractors.
Our budget did not break out between labor and equipment. We just had a set number in our, in our budget.
We have to pay prevailing wage. We know the prevailing wage didn't get, didn't go down. So the workers will get paid the same. It's maybe the profit margin for the contractor was tighter.
Okay.
Interesting. Yeah.
Really interesting. Okay. That's why I like being on the board and learning. I get to get little snippets of the economy. Okay. Um, so we do have an item. Is this the item that, or is there another, this is the one that you wanted to discuss? So the e-scooter ordinance discussion. So Lisa is going to lead the discussion.
Just because I, I really wanted to make it very controversial, your first meeting. No. Well, why did, why did I wait when it passed in August? So e-scooters have become more and more of an issue in the world park and also villages in the world, really. So last August, the state passed a new law regarding scooters and at the last minute, they pulled out of their art toward immunity. So some park districts, we did not have in our ordinance, anything about e-scooters yet, but some park districts did. They were allowing e-scooters on their trails and things like that. When they pulled that last minute, the toward immunity, that meant that it really put us in a very like a precarious position if we allow e-scooters on our trails, on our property, because we no longer have that toward immunity. So we were okay from August to now. I was hoping, the session ended Saturday. I was hoping that they were going to change. There was talk about maybe they're going to change it. So I was like, oh, it's not really an in ordinance. We're kind of safe. We don't, because we are protected by not saying anything, but that the lawyers, IEPD, Pderma all want us to say no scooter. So once they did not change anything with that, with our toward immunity as far as e-scooters, they recommended absolutely pass ordinance, saying no scooters. In the meantime, the village also, in the state, they also passed a law, I guess it's more of a law, that anybody 18 and under can't ride a scooter on, on public property. So really now we're just talking about people that are 18 and over. So it's easy to say, oh, why don't we just let adults do scooters? They're, they're fine. The problem is, is that scooters users aren't always the safest. So we, what we've found on trails and in parks and sidewalks, they're zipping around. And what if they hit someone on the trail? If they hit someone on a trail, they're not just going after that person. They're, if we allow it, they're also coming after us. So the recommendation is to pass ordinance, you know, not allow e-scooters on any of our property. That's what the Pderma, IEPD, our corporate counselors recommending. They do give us if you want to, but they're not recommending what we can do. So my recommendation is go with that recommendation. Now, how do you enforce that? Well, pretty much like how we enforce a lot of things. And we have a, for example, a drone ordinance, right? And we don't go around chasing every drone that is going through our park, but if that drone comes and crashes into someone, we're like, you know, we have ordinance against drones. You know, you shouldn't have been using it in our park. They can't, whoever got hurt from that can't come to us and sue us for that. So our approach would be, and this is actually what the village is doing. I don't know if you have kids in school and you've seen the newsletters or the education that's coming about. Public safety is not going to be chasing every kid in town that's on a scooter, nor are we. That would be unsafe pursuit of someone. And really they're faster. They can get into spaces. What we're doing, what we propose to do is, and this is what public safety is also, if they see a scooter at the school, they're putting a note on saying, you know, scooters are not allowed to for anybody under 18. We would do the same thing if we saw a scooter in our parking lot. We put a sticker that says, you know, scooter's not allowed on park district property or, you know, trails or whatever, kind of an education portion of that. In addition, what we'll do is that now that QR codes are so accessible and everybody knows how to use them, we're going to look at putting signs in our park that have, will have ordinance 700, which is that ordinance enters all of our rules for the park. So people can easily take their phone and look at those rules should they need it. So that's our recommendation is to move forward and not allow e-scooters on our property and then not do more of an educational as opposed to an enforcement of that ordinance.
Okay. Just some questions. I see a lot of scooters.
Yep.
First, just so I know, the, what's like the scooter speed and how does it compare? What, is it more dangerous than bikers? So I, I just don't understand.
Yes. So, yeah, so we, we have, we do allow e-bikes, but we have very clear rules and I put that in your packet, in the packet. E-bikes can only reach 20 miles an hour. There are a lot of our trails that they must stop, like they can't stop propelling once they reach that mile per hour. And they have to be equipped with a motor and the assist. So the person also has to pedal. Now, why bikes are still in our toward immunity? So we, if someone, so that's the biggest difference is that that's still, for some reason, they took out scooters from that. So that's the biggest difference. Scooter is identified as operators of low speed electric scooters. Wait, let me find it here. The initial language.
Be that they're more dangerous than the electric bike? It's really more just the toward, the torque factor.
Yeah, really. Yeah. I think they are more dangerous because here's what's happening is that people, especially young kids, they don't necessarily know how to drive and they don't know the rule of the road and the scooters are more accessible to, to young kids. Even though we're seeing e-bikes, there might be some changes in legislation soon with e-bikes do for kids. But the scooters, I think parents are, they're a cheaper price, price point. They're, would buy a scooter, say for $100. They're fun. They go fast. And so more kids seem to be, have a accessibility of scooters than they do e-bikes.
This past year, I've seen the e-bikes jump like dramatically. I don't remember seeing one two years ago.
Yeah.
I've seen 10 this week.
Yeah.
So I think
Adults. Yeah. So.
These are kids. These are kids.
Yeah. Now that, now that nice weather is out, everyone that got on for Christmas is out.
I could be wrong, but I think a kid did just get hurt from the scooter in Glencoe.
And, and the, the real, the real challenge with it is, you know, if you think about our parks, our parks butt against some major roads. And so that, that to me is, is the challenge and the, the people who tend to use some of these scooters don't realize that they are motor vehicles. And they don't have licenses for them and they whip out across, let's, let's think of a really good example that impacts us is Duke Park.
Right, exactly.
And they whip out across it and cars and to other pedestrians and there are challenges there. So yeah, I am 100% supportive of initiatives that put the safety of our park participants first. And I think these electric, these electric, you know, bikes or scooters or whatever they are, put our, put our park constituents at risk.
The electric scooter is defined as a device weighing less than 100 pounds with two or three wheels, handlebars and footboard a person can stand upon while riding that is solely powered by electric motor and human power. This definition shall not include motorcycles nor mobile phones. So that's part of that. There is ADA accommodation. So if someone has ADA needs a scooter, then they would just come to ADA coordinator and, and get that approval. So there is still, there's, there's that ability to do that.
I, I'm very supportive of this and I'm supportive of anything that reduces our liability in that regard. And I do think bikes are more of a, they, maybe I'm wrong because I don't have kids that age, but they seem to be more of a transportation thing versus scooters seem sort of like something that you would like just play around with stupidly.
I believe they're equal. My mind, they're equal. I just, what I've seen, because I'm, I'm home during the day and I'm out, I'm out walking my dogs all the time.
Yeah.
And I'm like amazed at what I see. I'm like, I, and I was thinking to myself, but I love my kids. I, I found them to be, because I work in the city too. So the, the scooters are everywhere, but these e-bikes are no better. I know safer, I should say, my mind, well, slightly safer. Because the bicycles.
And I think it's consistent with our drone policy too, right? The drone policy is a safety issue as well. We don't want, we don't want someone landing a drone on some kid's head or on a playground. And so I, I don't, me, you don't, you don't question that.
And if you wanted to, it, it's up to the board if you want, this e-bike policy has been passed by other boards, but if we're, we see, we are seeing a rise. You didn't see a lot of children on e-bikes about three or four years ago. Now we use mostly adults using them.
I just forgive me.
But, but if that, if that's changing, the board could always say, hey, we really don't.
Yeah.
You can go above and beyond and say, we really, really don't want e-bikes for children. I mean, you could, you could distinguish that, just like the state law did for scooters for adults. We don't want to do that because we don't have toward immunity for adults either, but we do have it for e-bikes. You could say we don't want e-bikes, children with e-bikes using it on property too.
Just wait, can kids ride their e-bikes to school now? They just can't ride e-scooters? So like, I'm just thinking if they ride their e-bike to a park.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any law change on e-bikes. I will look into that further, but I don't believe there is. It's specifically, education has been on scooters with the, the public safety. So.
Is there any data about the safety of the two compared to each other or not?
Not, I don't have any of that.
Oh, it might be too, I know.
Yeah.
It might be too new, but.
Yeah.
Think we're there.
It's good. It is. I agree with all of you, e-bikes, because children know the rules of the road yet. They haven't been taught, okay, you have to stop at a four-way stop. They just zip right through and you're right, a bike can go zipping through faster, I guess, than a pedaled bike. It all comes down to hopefully education and safety training. I know District 35 does a good job on their, their bike safety. But since the law changed specifically for scooters and they can't be used for under 18, that's what the focus has been on.
I think that's appropriate at this time. We can always revisit it.
Yeah, you absolutely can. Yep.
Okay. Lisa, did you have anything else?
Nope. So we're just going to advance that for approval on the scooter on next meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
I do.
We have consensus here. It was not controversial.
Yeah, I thought it, you know, you never know because you're like, I'm adult. I love scootering. We actually ironically, I don't really, but my daughter did have one in Chicago. That's what she used to get back and forth to work. She didn't use a car at all. So she scooted to, but I don't have scooter, but it was ironic that all of a sudden I started waiting for this legislation. Now all of a sudden, three, like two adult scooters have been showing up in our lobby, parked inside. And like, there's an example, they just park them right inside, not even at the bike rack. So I'm sure we'll get some, some people complaining to you on this one, but.
Well, that's too bad.
Okay.
Sorry that.
How do you really feel though?
You know, this, nevermind. This is me recorded. Okay. So there's no reason to enter to close session.
Correct.
So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I need a move.
So moved.
So moved.
So moved. Okay, in a second.
Okay. All in favor? I, okay, please record the time.
8:08.